Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here for the education of this call. This evening, we have a special guest who's going to assist us with our pledge of allegiance, Stuart Flye. Her mother is Ladon Williams. Her grandmother is Vivian Williams. And she is, I saw her, Jordan, fifth grade student at Fort Patrick Elvin. So would you please stand in place for that?
Let me read you this. Stuart Flye, of the United States of America, and to the Republic with his hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to say, mother and grandmother, well, way back. Mama and grandmother, way back. Thank you so much, Dr. Williams. Thank you very much. Board members, in accordance with board policy, the agents, the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts against us and appearance of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict interest or appearance of such conflict in respect to any matters scheduled before this meeting or anyone other than us? If somebody that is about conflict or appears in conflict and refrain from participating in a matter involved. The city board members will not have any more recognition that we need to do. We also have a woman that has signed up for public participation in the documentation. Mr. Williams, Mr. Dr. Williams, can you be here? Did you make the sign up for public participation or just do you recognize? Okay. Mr. Clark, can we get my vote? Come on down, sir. We'll let you sit. Let me read you a little bit before you come down, okay? In order to provide professional courage for citizens from concerns and issues before Clayton County Board Education, we ask that all speakers be aware of the following guidelines. All Clayton County Board Education meetings are video and audio taken in order to ensure fairness and advocacy. Board members will not respond to the speaking and comments from speakers, having the chair reduce as appropriate. Issues requiring possible action by board members are future agenda and issues that may need to address by the school system and administration will be removed. These are language and personal attacks on board members, students, employees, or other citizens will not be permitted. All speakers must adhere to issued disability policy and other policies as necessary. In compliance with state sections, matters of personnel will not be discussed in public. It will be handled in an executive session of board education after all administrative channels have been exhausted. All these speakers should sign up for this public participation session. You will be allowed to speak. We ask that you identify yourself, which may be in time and in order to the board. Then, Mr. Flye will be our timekeeper. These people will have three minutes and we ask you to adhere to time. And Mr. Flye will keep an eye on the same one, okay, before the time runs out. All right, so this is Mr. Ladon Williams.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ladon Williams. Here, I'm a single father of two daughters, who was a graduate of Valentine High School, and now a student at Clayton State University. I'm here to thank and acknowledge Dr. Lika Anderson for all her tremendous support in our community and also what she's done to help my family. She's done a couple of favors that have been really important. Every time I reach out to Dr. Anderson, either email or by phone, she always comes through, always answers the emails, phone calls, and always sets up some duty as representing my district and my county here at Clayton County. So I'm here to thank Dr. Lika Anderson for all the help that she's done in our community and my family. I truly, truly appreciate this for me and my daughter. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. We don't talk, but we get that. We appreciate that. And Dr. Anderson, we still remind. And I just want to say, he was, board members, he was one of the people that communities and schools, they were able to help the family. And I just want to thank communities and schools too for stepping up. But thank you, Mr. Williams. I appreciate it. We generally don't get that, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Board, we do have another guest this evening on our next board. These are the other guests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased that we have West Clayton Elementary School, so they're really not guests, but they are guests to this meeting. They don't only come to the meeting, but are there sitting quietly? And they're probably thinking, oh, no, hurry up. We're just being along, right? So we're going to come to the audience, and probably the board will just go to the table seat. West Clayton Elementary School, they performed a few weeks ago at the Atlanta Airport, and it was a wonderful performance. And so, we thought we'd skip to them. Why perform for the whole world when you can even perform for your school system, right? And so, they are here to perform for us. West Clayton Elementary School and by our Mr. Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams, I'm looking for him. Okay, there he is. Dr. Williams. Good to see you, sir. Good to see you. So let's give them a hand as they perform for us on this.
And it does give us a pleasure to present the West Clayton Elementary School singing 100. This is an ensemble of groups. This is not a whole 100. So I just want to let you know. And if you really want to hear them sing, they've got a Christmas concert coming up pretty soon. And I'm sure I'm going to try to make, when they announce today, I'm going to try to be there, because I'm in standard great. And this is Catherine Roberts, who is the recorder.
One, two, three, three. One, two, three. One, 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 two, three. One, two, three, three. One, two, three, three. One, two, three. One, two, three, 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 three. Hey you, listen. Hey, listen to me. You have got the freedom to do what you want. Use your armor to the heart and don't be a fool. Because you have got the right to say. Knowledge is power. I know. It's power. I know what I know. The more you learn, the farther you go. When you get an education, you'll be taking a stay. Because power is power. Grab it. Come on, come on. One, two, three, three. One, two, three. One, 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 two, three, three. One, two, three, three. One, two, three. One, 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 two, three. One, two, three, three. One, two. Come on, come on. Hey you. You say. Hey, listen to me. Use your freedom, why? And then you will say. Hey, listen to me. You can have a man. Hey, listen to me. It's all up to you. You made the choice. You can make the choice. To stay. Come on, come on. Knowledge is power. I know. It's power. I know what I know. The more you learn, the farther you go. When you get an education, you'll be taking a stay. Because power is power. Grab it. Come on. One more time. Come on. Come on, come on. The more you learn, the farther you go. We're far from the start. Keep it simple, your faith. Because power is power. Grab it. Come on. Yeah. Ah, yeah, baby. Come on, come on. It's gonna be, it's gonna be. It's gonna be. Swing it your way. Swing it your way. Where I play. Woo-hoo, woo. Come on. Best school in the world, best boys and girls. Come on. Mission, mission. Come on. Back to the top. Hey. Sing it, baby. The C E. Don't remember I did that? Ah, yeah. Come on, come on. One more time. Mission, mission. Come on. Now we're going to do a slide for you. Slide for your education. Slide into some reading. Writing. Math. Science. Social studies. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Play the hound and crowd. Move up into some art. P. Social studies. Wrap it up and back. And school in the world.
We'd like for all of the students to please come back in so we can get a picture with the board, so all the student performers could come back in. I know your parents would like to take some pictures, and so would we. Just come on up, come right out in the middle, come around to the side, just come on up. You want to take it? You heard me, Sean? Okay. Whenever you guys are ready. Okay. All right. Okay. I'm going to count to three. We're going to take two shots, okay? Good call. All right. One. Two. Three. One more. One. Two. Three. All right. Hold it. We've got some other pictures being taken. Here's the camera.
So if you want to come back, she can put you on some of the phones and read. Somebody cannot, but Dr. Williams has asked for them.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and community members. Today, I would like to ask for, tonight, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. We lost an icon in our community this weekend, last night, and he is the father of our attorney, Mr. Clem Doyle. It is the joint, I think he's retired, Chief Supreme Court Justice Harris Heinz. Ms. Goree, I, and Ms. Baker, we spent some time with him this summer, and he is truly going to be missed, so I would just, I would not leave him missed if I just asked for us to take a moment of silence for Chief Justice Heinz. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, I think most of us agree that we did not give an executive session. We have one personal recommendation to consider, but we do not think that is a discussion. May I do the best for Dr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, to all that are here. We'd like to recommend a position of Director of Finance, Alfred Graham.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Christus? And Mr. Strayton?
I submit the motion.
Board members, if you have any questions? If you can, just say it. It's a compliment, and we don't have the executive session to talk about it, John. Just say it. Dr. Anderson, give it up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, district administrators, and citizens of Clayton County. Here are the announcements for the month of November. November is National Family Literacy Month, and it's home to Veterans Day. November is also Native American Heritage Month, or as the North is commonly called, or referred to as American Indian and Alaskan Native Month. Schools will be closed for election day Tuesday, November 6th, 2018. Students will not report, and it will be a non-birthday for most employees. Only 225 days employees will report to work on November 6th. Every year, the state of Georgia recognizes the month of November as Parent Engagement Month, and schools across the state highlight the role parents play in a student's education. Additionally, the third Thursday in November is National Parent Involvement Day. This is a day for all parents to consider how they can get more involved in the education of their children. This year, that day falls on November 15th. The month of November has been proclaimed as Georgia Homeless Awareness Month. For more than a decade, Clayton County Public Schools has provided activities and support to homeless children and youth that enable them to enroll, attend, and succeed in school and in life. As part of this month, we observe hunger and homelessness during the week of November 11th through the 17th. The wearing of green ribbons throughout November demonstrates support of maintaining a stable educational environment for homeless children and youth. The week of November 12th through the 16th is American Educational Week. The theme for this year is public schools. We are here for all. We encourage our parents, guardians, and community stakeholders to become familiar with the work that is taking place on our more than 60 campuses. The week of November 12th through the 18th is Home to Schools Psychological Awareness Week. The week is observed to build connections between students and school communities that enhance student skills, improve their outlook, and set them up to thrive in everything they do. The theme for this year is unlock potential, find your password. All schools and offices will be closed Monday through Friday, November 19th through the 23rd, for Thanksgiving holidays. The district will return to a regular schedule on Monday, November 26th. The next boardwork session will be on Monday, November 26th, at 6:00 PM. That will be here in the boardroom. The December board meeting will be here in the boardroom on Monday, December 3rd, at 6:00 PM. Finally, the Department of School Social Work is gearing up for our 10th Annual Blue Drive. The theme for this year's festivities is a healthy choice for the holidays. In an effort to allow families to choose a menu suited best fit for their family's taste in housing accommodations, we have restructured the way in which we will collect donations. As in previous years, families in need will be identified from all CCPS schools. Each family will be provided a meat item along with a $25 gift card for a local grocery store to supplement their meal. This year's gifts will be funded by donations by our valued stakeholders. Donations should be given to the school social worker at school sites and to the Department of Student Services at the district level by December 7th. Madam Chair and community members and board members, this concludes tonight's announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So, board members, we have a couple of meetings in order to contribute to this. Board members, we need to continue the minutes for the boardwork sessions that turn to the 24th and the board meeting on October 1st. Are there any changes or additions or corrections in those minutes that we have been given? Seeing none, the minutes will stand as they have been submitted. Dr. Reese?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We'd like to first begin our superintendent's report by sharing a video of one of our students. As you all know, tomorrow is a big voting day, and we, in our school system, we have been very intentional about ensuring that our students are educated and that they are connecting the work and the, it's not the classroom, but what's happening in our larger society. So we're pleased to share a video with Damaya Player from McGarrett Elementary School. Dr. Hopkins is the principal. She's a fifth grade student. She's joined by her mom. Is it Ty Player? Ty, Derek Player, her dad, and Tyce. Is it Tycey? Tyce. Tyce Player, her brother, and her Xavier, her cousin Xavier Simmons. Did I get that one right? We're glad, pleased to share this video. Basically, she's engaged politically, and she's interviewing one of our community officials. And so, we wanted to share with you all, in addition to what our students are doing at every level, this was a video that has come to our attention that we wanted to share. So at this time, let me play you the video. And then, if there are other comments, anyone who wants to add or comment about the video that you were sharing.
Turn the mic off. Turn the mic off.
And I'm representing the District 74 in Clayton County.
Okay, first question. What job do you have in your community?
I might say, because we, as a legislative body, we are considered a part-time legislature, which means that we do a legislative duties part-time, and we also use all of the resources upcoming in the board yesterday. And so, so currently, I'm a entrepreneur. I own my own business, a promotional business out there.
Okay, next question. Why are you a part of Georgia House of Representatives in Portland?
Well, it is important. One reason, because of my citizens like you are towards your age, and making sure that we have a better Georgia as you grow older and become adults, and make decisions, same decisions we're able to make. And as we, in our age, and we become senior citizens, it's important to make sure we have a cause and place that are going to protect the citizens here, people have a place, a safe place to live, a safe place to work, and a safe place to raise their families. And the other thing is always remember, this is something I try to, always remind myself when I talk to other people, that are interested in running for office, I always tell the office people, you need to be a friend. Because so many other things that come before you, but you always look at, my job, the reason I was elected is to look out for the people and make sure they have a better point of mind. And we need that opposite for me when I, my time comes, that I don't want to be a legislative guy, want to be able to say that I was able to accomplish this, I was able to accomplish that. And that only comes to be in office, in power, it's going to be in office, even in this position, it allows us to do space that every student will get a chance to do, it allows us to be people that actually don't get a chance to do. Like, every year, the governor has a holiday event, they got all the measures. So if I wasn't anybody there, that probably never had a chance to have that, the governor is right. And so, with that, I have to make sure that I keep myself. And so with that, I have to make sure that I keep myself humble, and I have to remember, here, I don't have the opportunity. And because I have the opportunity, I have to take full advantage of it. And make sure that though, when I'm supposed to do, and when I'm ready, there will be people saying, you're going to talk to me, then I actually do that. So that's why, if I had to guess on the client, they would definitely, I would stay humble. And ask questions. You know, you're not, I know everything, I can tell you, but I don't know everything. If they ask a question, I'm going to try to find the best answer, not going to just break up something, they ask you a question. So I always ask questions until you can get me right, understand, you know. You might not even ask you to agree with it, but you can ask a question until you, that's how you learn a lot. And that is staying for all this, like you can do, watching TV and seeing what's going on in the, you know, with this Republican Party, the Democrat, the Independent, the Libertarian. Don't just get stuck on one thing, because you have to get all of it together. And that's one thing that I can say, that I feel very confident, comfortable in saying, is that I've been there, I'm a Democrat, and I've been there to work for Republicans, I've been there to work for Independents. Because there are some issues that are not part of it. Education is not part of it. It doesn't matter whether you're Democrat or Republican, you want the best education. Healthcare is not part of it. Everybody gets sick, they don't go to the hospital and say, is this a Democrat hospital or this is a Republican hospital? And you say, hey, is this the hospital? And if you go into work, you don't want to say, hey, are you a Republican congressman or a Democrat congressman? You think that must be great, that may be, that's what you're interested in. So, you know, keeping all those things in mind, I think we've been very well, I wish you the best. Whenever I can do to assist, at any time you want to come down to the Capitol, you might be out of school or whatever, and you might sometimes have a break, so you might still in school, but it's good. You might not say in school, but we might say, we here at the Capitol, then you definitely come to them, give you a card. If you come to, if you come down to shopping at the Capitol, that is okay.
Thank you for talking to me.
Let's give her a hand. All I would say is hold them accountable. Hold them accountable, good job. Next, we'll have on the superintendent's report, a very quick update. Georgia Assessment Innovation Pilot. This information was shared on October 1st of the group we shared with the public in large at a board meeting, that we're in the process with state board approval. We're in the process, we're one of the few school systems around the state that are, that have really come together to transition away from Georgia milestones. If the, if the federal Department of Education will allow us to do so. We are in the process of submitting an application to the US Department of Education. And hopefully, we'll get approval to transition over the next four to five years away from Georgia milestones. We have a few schools that are piloting the assessment instrument that we are looking at. And those three schools are Smith Elementary, Morrow Middle School, and Stillwell School of the Arts. You should know, we'll continue to share more information as we make progress with this innovation pilot. But the goal is, again, to move away from Georgia milestones, which occurs normally in April and May, and to use a more informative assessment, which has a proficiency indicator that can be utilized in lieu of Georgia milestones. And so our goal is to assess students throughout the year, about three times throughout the year, use that data to perform instruction, and then, at the end of the year, have some type of proficiency assessment or outcome that can be used in lieu of Georgia milestones. And so, more to come as we pilot again three schools this year, and we bring on additional schools in the next school year. But again, the goal will be to move away from Georgia milestones within the next four to five years. The last thing we have today will be our mental wellness model. So I'm asking, I'm asking Dr. Colly, I want to, she's going to highlight some hot points of our mental wellness model. Many of you have heard about, have heard of System of Care. And System of Care is one of many providers in our county. And as we have been working to work with United Way and many other organizations, there are many organizations in this county who wanted, who want to partner with our school system. So what we decided to do was, instead of building a model around one particular provider, we have developed a model that we can put all providers into, if those providers are eligible to serve. And so, Dr. Colly is going to share with you high level, very quickly, what our work has been, the PowerPoint is out there for your benefit. You will not get it all today. So, Dr. Colly, the intended not to share it all today. And so, it will be quick, high level, and you all know, I believe that those of us who teach children have to be readers ourselves, right? And I'm glad that this board is, is a reading board. It's a reading board, and our focus, of course, is reading. But we want you to share, if you will, the hot points of the model that, and if they have questions, at some point, we'll be able to entertain those questions.
Attention. Captain, please say it. She gave a court session, so that may assume what my evidence is. Or that very much mentioned is the cause of my guilt that helped me face the local complications to avoid. Maybe not. Maybe I'm more complicated than what I first thought. Maybe I need more help than what I first saw, or maybe the suffering is brought upon by the one effect the most. Maybe I'm the problem. Tard, choosing. Maybe it's me, maybe I'm the person, maybe I'm the catalyst for the attachment. The cause of this catalyst is easy, and that is all the same action I started. Being one of these, I'm just a little bit. That's why I can't, I can't see my own homes. Why do I still have to sit down? Why still do you listen to me, despite the presence of friends and colleagues? One of my life is gone, and I'm checking the parents who are not involved in my life. We will see past this dark psychological arc. I will doubt my existence because this is another job. I will find a light and become my own godfather. This trauma, I will reach you in time.
First, I'd like to thank our Department of Safety and Security for the production of that video.
Thank you. And the video sets the stage for the work that Dr. Anderson has alluded to in regards to our Health and Wellness Model, which is called ACES, which stands for Awareness, Collaboration, and Education. What I'd like to point out to you is some really high points. As Dr. Anderson said, we have the information including all of the data that we can use to develop this model. The ACES model is an acronym to describe a four-pronged effect or approach to addressing the mental health of school-aged children. We are so excited about some of the things that we have done in the district to raise awareness and the collaborations that we started over the past year as it relates to mental health in our district. And so, A stands for awareness, C stands for collaboration, E is for the education, and S is for the support. The bottom line is, our goal is to alleviate some of the stigma surrounding mental health and to ensure that we are giving services to students as they meet them based upon their needs. So, we know our data. We looked at our data to help us determine the direction that we need to go in and channeling supports to our children. The blue bars in your handouts are for 16, 17, and the red bars represents our data from the Student Health Survey for 17, 18. And as you look at your data, and you look at the information from the survey, this is just one tool that we use to help us in determining how to address mental health in our district. You will see some spikes in some areas in the middle school from the previous year, as well as in the high school. So it's very important that we take a very close look at what's going on in our schools as it relates to youth mental health. We also looked at the data that we report to the State Department annually surrounding crisis, and specifically to mental health. With this approach, we look specifically at schools and how we reporting and refer our students for mental health, which help us to gauge where we might need to channel support in our school district. We also took a close look at the safety assessments for the school year as we began in here to help us determine what's going on, how we need to address things, again, where the support needs to be. You may think that the number 108 is going to surpass our total of 787 that we reported out for the previous year, but we are under the assumption that this number is high for all of September based on the fact of awareness, that we've increased awareness amongst our stakeholders. And by increasing awareness, there are more referrals that are coming in to our key team members. So we have had 29 rate calls for suicides so far this year, seven cutting incidents, and three attempted suicides, but no successive suicides. So that's the key thing, and the important thing is that the children are getting the help that they need in their schools. So what does our data say to us? Basically, we have seen increases in suicide across the secondary, third level. We also predict that there's a correlation between homelessness and mental health concerns. And there's a known shift in mental health and suicide on the south end of our school district, which includes that Lovejoy area, as well as possible gain correlation between increased awareness and the data that we are reporting as it relates to safety assessment. So we know what the research says, and we know that unmet mental health needs amongst school-aged children will and does impact their abilities to be successful. So, we also, as Dr. Anderson indicated, looked at the gaps in what we were providing over the past two years to be able to address this phenomenon in our community. And in some doing, we had to also look at the gaps that the state provides for us, as well as areas that we need to focus in on. That being, of course, mental health, House Bill 763 also has us to address mental health concerns through awareness. So, in bridging the gap, the ACE Mental Health Model, which is a school-based health and wellness model, will assist us in addressing these gaps from the previous years and those gaps that the state has also said that we need to deploy. Also, we need to keep in mind that one of our goals for this month is to not only increase the number of students that have access to services and their families, but a part of it is a collective approach in terms of us working with our stakeholders to leverage not only our resources, but those resources, those partnerships, key partnerships that we have in the community. So ACE is a multi-tiered system approach. I want to focus your attention on the model itself, beginning at tier ones, two, and three. And I want to share with you very briefly that the model itself is anchored in our circle of support, which will serve as a basis for referrals for students to receive support through that mental, through our new model. Our conceptual Frank Frank framework, further defined each tier. And then if you'll take a look, you'll see the services that are provided at each tier level. We're really excited to be able to provide school-based mental health therapists in some of our schools this year, in addition to having a network of mental health providers to meet the needs of our children, to provide some safe spaces. Because we know that trauma informs who have safe spaces that children can go and de-escalate regarding behaviors that they may be experiencing. This is again, I'm going to look at the model, which will employ a centralized referral process, which will feed numerous channels. But the key is, we have a way to get children to the services that they need, either direct or through our circle of support. The big piece for us is accountability. That was something that was a great concern over the previous years, is our ability to be able to say how our children, children are doing, and we had a platform for inputting data. So this model will allow us to do that. We partnered with United Way and Georgia State, our Office of Assessment Accountability, to work within a platform that's called Clear Impact, which will provide us with an opportunity to look at measures related to attendance, behavior, academic wellness, and the overall healthcare needs of our families, and to ensure that those families without insurance gain access to healthcare. The model, school-based health model, we have used this model in two of our schools over the previous two years. And our data in those schools increased. There has been a decrease in emotional distress, behavior difficulties, hyperactivity, and difficulty in the long run. So we know if we do these things, that we will see improvement in certain areas, and we will see a reduction in discipline and a reduction in mental health stigma. The bottom line is that ACES aligns to the direction that the school district is headed in, in our definition of high performance. So that we know that based upon this model, that we will be able to shift the data as it relates to the mental health needs of our children. And so this is just a list of our collaborative impact partners that have worked with us over the past six to nine months to put this model in place. And we are working, Dr. Anderson has also worked, to begin establishing a partnership and relationship with Morehouse School of Medicine. So we thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Colly. And I would just add, as you close, on Saturday, we had a 5K walk to bring awareness to suicide and to really encourage prevention. And we're very pleased that the students were in attendance, staff members were in attendance, parents, community, they were in attendance, and it was a wonderfully managed, wonderfully managed. So as Dr. Colly has shared, our goal is to encourage our students to know that things, as they may appear today, are always subject to change. That there's always hope, there's always a brighter day, and that we have to know, we're here to support them. And so this model, while we may be focused on mental wellness and particularly suicide, we want you all to know that we're working with all of the providers within our community. We're identifying what services they can provide, and we're putting them in into the model where their services are best aligned to the needs of students. And so again, our model is focused on students, and it provides us an opportunity to build further collaboration. We're very excited about the possibility of bringing Morehouse School of Medicine on as a partner in this collaborative work. And so, it's probably the only model that utilizes, we're leveraging the relationship that we have with our residential treatment facility, and that we have to provide instruction for those students, but we wanted to take full advantage of the expertise that exists in that resource. So we're leveraging all of these resources, using funds differently, maximizing the use of our provider grants, et cetera, as we ensure that we provide support, services, mental health services, mental wellness services to our students as they're needed. Realizing that the schools only have a capacity to do so many things, and we've got to leverage all the partnerships in our community when the school clearly has an issue that exceeds its capacity. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
I do have a question. I teach a little lesson. There's been a time where I called a parent and said, I just need to talk to you. Something's changed with Johnny, is there something going on in your home? And a lot of times, they're like, oh, well, we didn't want to bother you, we didn't know. Is there a way that a parent can contact these services and say, you know, if you get death in the family or, you know, some major change in the life of the child, that if we know, if the parents feel comfortable enough to come to us, we can start before we start seeing a problem? I want to know if we have some kind of option like that for our parents?
Yes, we do. As you well know, we have the MTSS process, we have the circle of support, we have the five or four process. So there are many opportunities, of course, employing teachers and principals exactly if things of those, if those issues are of consideration or are concerned for parents. So there are many vehicles in which our Or there are many vehicles in which our parents can express these concerns and then staff clearly can mobilize to provide support to the students.
Other question.
Uh, may I add? I think it was Cory Keating.
Uh, they they ran it slide twenty.
I should share that, as you all know, the governor released this list of eligible turnaround schools. Clayton County had zero schools on the list. And the Georgia Department of Education released its first list, Comprehensive School Intensive Support List. And that list comprises schools that are in the lowest five percent around the state and that have a grad rate below sixty-seven percent. Clayton County had no schools in the lowest five percent. We had one school on the list, and we anticipated that Perry Academy would be on the list because of its grad rate. But I can assure you, they only added Perry Academy because they just had to have something from Clayton County. Because they know that even Perry Academy's grad rate is higher than most alternative schools in the metro area. So, we're just obliged to do this time and continue to provide Perry Academy the support that it deserves, but they're doing excellent work at Perry Academy. So, I just wanted you all to know that, that our community, our school system is moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Dr. Beasley. Board members, we need to consider our consent agenda, which includes the purchase in the court, financial, cost of revenue, cost of construction, and personal charges and reports. They have motioned to approve this consent agenda, which we discussed in our last meeting. Ms. Cory.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Ms. Baker?
Senator.
Board members, you have a question.
Excuse me, I should have said approve the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, what did you, I thought I heard.
No, I think I said accept, I should have said approve.
And there you go, thank you so much. The last thing on our agenda is to adopt tentative date, two thousand nineteen board meeting calendar, consider this in January for for official approval or final table. So, the motion, yeah, Cory.
I move that we specifically, that we approve the tentative adoption of the the two thousand nineteen board meeting calendar.
Senator. Board members, what's your question?